Members of the public and those watching on the webcam. Before we commence the meeting this evening, can I draw your attention to the fire regulations which are on the screen behind me? There are no practices planned for this evening, so if the alarm goes, please leave the building as quickly as possible. We assemble across the road under the canopy outside waitrose. Can I ask all to switch their phones to silent or to off, please? Members of the public, I'd like to say that as a committee, we do understand the matters under consideration tonight can be emotive, however, please be respectful of those around you in the public gallery and the committee, refrain from booing, cheering, or any other form of disturbance. This is a meeting held in public, it's not a public meeting. Moving on to the main business, can I introduce the officers sitting in front of me? First of all, on the far side is Lewis Jones, our planning lawyer, then Beth Harland Smith, the Development Control Manager, Chris French, the Area Team Leader for Southern and Western Area, Jane McCullen, Planning Officer, Philippa Stanton, Stanton, sorry, Planning Officer, Kayleigh Taylor, and that completes the team in front. Moving on to the agenda, item number one, the minutes of the meeting held on the 21st of November, been on tape for half an hour, did you wish I signed them as a true record?
Agreed.
Thank you. Apology to absence, Emma?
We have apology for absence from Councillors John Fraser, Stephen Hill, Mike Hodge, Martin Lear, Julia Potts, and Chris Storey. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Questions by members of the public, have we had any, Emma?
None received.
Questions from members?
None received.
And then Beth, any relevant updates, government guidance or legislation since our last meeting?
None, Chairman.
Thank you. Yeah, okay, come back to that. And Beth again, performance against government targets?
Thank you, Chairman. On page seven of your agenda, you can see services performance against our two government targets, speed and quality, and you'll see that we are performing excellently against these. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Beth, and in my haste, I missed out item three on the agenda, disclosure of interests. Emma?
Personal, non-bucunary interests from Farnham Town Councillors in the items on the agenda, haven't received any others prior to the meeting.
Thank you very much. Moving on, application for planning commission, should there be any site inspections, they'll be held on Tuesday, the 29th of January, it's a time to be agreed, and then applications for, which are all, the first are applications subject to public speaking, and A1 WA 2018 0874, land at 77 Shortheath Road, Farnham, poses the erection of a dwelling and associated works together with the erection of an extension to the existing dwelling, dwelling following demolition of the existing extension and garage. And to introduce this, we have Jane, all yours.
Thank you, councillor. Okay, so this application site is located to the south-east of Shortheath Road, it's accessed via a single lane unmade track. The site currently comprises a semi-detached dwelling with a detached garage, along with a small timber-clad outbuilding, which is located around about there. There is a garden to the south, garden area to the south and west of the site, the site declines sharply in land level, and the existing dwelling is served by an unmade parking area to the north of the site, and Shortheath Road in general is residential in character, and this particular part of the road declines from road level. So this aerial photograph shows where the site is located, and you can see its situation in comparison to the dwellings around. So it's this triangular shaped plot here, and this is the track which is accessed via. So it's a semi-detached pair of dwellings, and this is an existing extension. So moving on to some photos of the site, so photograph A shows a view down, oh, sorry, down the access track, you can see, so this track is currently shared by number 77 and 75, here you can see a new build at number 73, and this is just, you can see the tip of number 79 Shortheath Road. Photograph B looks north-west from number 77, looking at the boundary with number 79 Shortheath Road. Photograph C over here, looks to the front elevation of number 77 currently, and you can see its single-storey extension here. Photograph D, this looks north from the middle of the site, up towards the garage and boundary hedging with number 79. So this garage is to be removed as part of the application, and you can see sort of the change in land level from the site, this is about halfway down the site. Photograph E, this looks south towards vegetation which separates the site with the properties on Sunny Dell Lane. Photograph F, you can look north-east towards the boundary with number 75 and the associated hedging which separates the two amenity areas. Photograph F looks north-east towards the boundary with number 70, oh, photo F looks north-east towards the boundary with number 75 and associated hedging. Photograph G looks towards existing shed, and up beyond you can sort of see number 81 further onwards on Shortheath Road. And photograph H looks towards the southern boundary again, and this shows a TPO-protected tree, this one here. Okay, so in the block plan, we can see this is how the proposed dwelling would look after the extension has been added, it shows the situation of the new build in relation to the existing and the extended dwelling. The new dwelling will be rotated slightly in the site to prevent direct views towards number 7, number 77 and number 79, which are here and here. The block plan sort of with a more detailed view, shows a proposed parking provision for five spaces and a means to enter and exit the site in a forward gear as required from the Highway Commission. So there's two parking spaces which are here, and three which are here. The Waverley Parking Guidelines currently asks for 2.5 parking spaces for a dwelling with three or more bedrooms, and we think having five in total meets this criteria, and the blue area shows room for churning, entering and exiting in a forward gear. Just some elevations of the proposed extended number 77. So the removal of the single-storey grey extension which you could see would be replaced with a two-storey extension like this, it would be constructed in matching materials to appear in keeping with the existing dwelling, it would be set down from the main ridge height to appear subordinate to the main dwelling. So the front side, the other inside, and this would be the rear. And these are the proposed elevations of the new dwelling. So this new dwelling was adjacent to number 77 Shortheath Road, it would be two-storey, and it would be built into the declining land level to reduce some of its bulk, it would match the traditional design of the sort of the pair of semi-detached dwellings, and would also be of matching materials. So you can see from this side elevation that it sort of does factor in the gradient of the land, and you can see sort of the existing dwelling beyond. And here are some illustrative plans of the relationship between the new dwelling and the existing building at number 77. So at the closest point, there would be a separation distance of 2.9 metres between the two dwellings, however, the new dwelling is sort of wedged slightly away from the existing dwelling, and so at the pinch point, all of the internal windows in these two elevations would either serve secondary rooms or non-habitable rooms, or rooms with dual So from the proposed floor plans, they show that the new dwelling would be a two-story dwelling with four bedrooms, so these are four bedrooms, the top floor, the ground and first floor windows on the north west in elevation of the new dwelling, so this bay one here, and this bay one here, these would both be set below the existing hedge height, and would not lead to any overlooking of adjacent properties due to this hedge, and there's a condition imposed that the hedge is retained. And the first floor windows, which would look again towards Shortheath Road, these two windows would serve a hallway and a bathroom, so there wouldn't be any sort of harmful overlooking from these two first floor windows. And again, the windows on these two closest elevations, at first and ground floor level, they all either serve dual aspect rooms or non-habitable rooms. And that's just the roof plan of the dwellings. And the matters of principle and technical opinion are the impact on highway safety and parking provision, the impact on the SPA and the biodiversity and habitats regulations, and the matters of judgment which members are now asked to consider are the impacts on residential amenity and the impacts on visual amenity. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Jane. Now move on to public speaking, and first of all, I call on Anita York. I think Emma's explained the system, you have four minutes from when you start speaking, and after three and a half minutes, you'll hear a little beep to remind you to start getting towards your conclusion. No, no, just sit down, please. Get comfortable before you start.
I address the committee on behalf of my family as owners of the property at number 79 Shortheath Road, we object to the plans on the following grounds. Firstly, privacy, the plans provided a computer-generated image of the new dwelling and the supposed view of this from number 79, stating that the new dwelling will be concealed by planting and by virtue of being set much lower on the site than 77 and 79 itself. We took issue with the accuracy of this portrayal as it conveyed a false impression to the planning department, as the view from inside 79 would be more of the north and north-west side of the construction, at the end containing the larger bedroom window with its bedroom with its protruding window looking directly towards number 79 and the bathroom. It does not show what the visual impact would be from the rear garden or first floor rear windows of number 79. Therefore, we believe that our privacy would be compromised as we would be overlooked from this end of the new dwelling. We also understand that the garage will be demolished and that the main bedroom end of the construction will be within the footprint of that garage. Currently, there is a high laurel believed to be within the boundary of number 77A, and the developer states that the new construction will be screened by high vegetation, affording only a roof view of the construction for number 79. This laurel is high, but it's spindly low down and low level will provide virtually no screening from the car parking area looking through to our rear garden. We therefore request that, if the planning were to be agreed, then a condition be included for permanent low-level screening and specification of the minimum height of the foliage and maintenance of this, in order to conceal cars, car park, and first floor of the property from view of number 79. Secondly, proximity, it's cited that the distance between the nearest point on the new construction, and that of 79, is over 21 metres, and if the distance between two dwellings is more than 21 metres, they are less likely to have a material impact on the neighbour. Currently, there still do not appear to be any diagrams on the planning website which include measurements, however, we believe that the plans show number 77A to be very close to the boundary with 79, and we therefore still question why the new construction cannot be built further back from number 79. Due to the intended proximity of number 77A, the windows in the proposed construction should be prevented from overlooking the rear garden and rear windows on both the ground and first floors of number 79. We therefore request that, should planning be granted, a planning condition be incorporated to install and maintain frosted windows, and for any windows that are opened, to open facing away from number 79. It's understood that the height of the first floor of the proposed 77A is planned to be lower than the first floor of 79, albeit only 80 centimetres lower. However, there is still an issue of privacy of the first floor windows on 79 being invaded by the first floor windows on the proposed construction, notably the hallway, bathroom, and large main bedroom windows nearest number 79. Additionally, should the planning go ahead, we request a planning condition which would prevent any future loft conversion in 77A from incorporating any form of window in the pitched roofing to the north of the property, which would overlook number 79's rear garden, ground and first floor glazing. If windows were planned and incorporated into the pitched roof overlooking or facing 79, conditions would be required that stipulate that glazing should be frosted, and that windows cannot be opened to overlook the rear garden and windows of number 79. Finally, there is an underground air raid shelter in the garden of number 79 which is of an unusual concrete design moulded from an Anderson shelter, it's located close to the boundary between 79 and the current site of 77, and about eight feet deep, we intend to keep this structure, and therefore request that plans for the proposed dwelling take into account the foundations of this archaeological feature, and we raise the question of a potential party wall agreement. And lastly, there is a retaining wall between 79 and the proposed 77A which runs just over half of the boundary, starting from the boundary junction of 77A, 79, and 81, and this wall appears to have a substantial crack in it, and the two sections of the wall are misaligned which suggest subsidence, and it's understood that it's a responsibility to 77A and requires attention to address the issues with it and make any necessary repairs.
Thank you very much, Anita. Well done, well done on the timing too. I call on Andrew Tomkins, please. I think you know the drill, you have four minutes.
This site is situated at the end of a lane which already serves two existing dwellings, number 75 and number 77 Shortheath Road. The proposed scheme consists of extending and refurbishing one of the existing semi-detached cottages, and erecting a single new dwelling to the plot to the side. As the site is located down a private lane, the proposal is not visible from the more public street scene, and so has little impact on the character of the area. The scheme was developed through a series of pre-application negotiations and inquiries with the Highways, Planning and Building Control Departments, to ensure that the proposal meets each consultant's requirements in detail before a formal planning application was submitted. Surrey Highways are happy that the track and access could serve three dwellings or more, and the parking and drive has been carefully arranged to ensure that there is ample parking provided, and the driveway design allows enough space so that cars can turn around safely and leave the site in a forward gear. We consulted the planning department to ensure that the location of the new house complemented the area, and when you look at the pattern and density of development on the location plan, you can see that the scale and the proposals at 77 fit well with the character and the plot sizes in the area. The new house is set at a different angle to the existing houses in order to sit directly along the contour lines of the terrain, the relationship between the two houses creates a pleasing social connection between them at the front, and encourages a sense of community, while more private areas are created at the rear as the gardens fan outward. The site is sloped, and the design utilizes the natural fall of the terrain to create a two-story house, but due to the slope of the land, the house will appear as a single-story house from the entrance level. There is a pleasing stepped entry down from the car parking area to the house, and there is also level entry directly into the top floor to make this a lifetime home. The ridge height and ground floor of the new house at 77A has been set lower than the two neighbouring cottages in order to, for the new house to appear subservient at the entrance level. The removal of the one and a half to two-story garage structure from right near the boundary, we feel will make a positive effect upon 79. The rear roof plane has flush solar panels facing due south, and the design of the new house picks up on some successful design cues from the architectural language of neighbouring houses such as 73, like the chimney, bay windows, and clear story windows. Additionally, some colour is used to help give the houses their own unique identity. The side extension to the existing house is stepped back and subservient in scale to maintain the feeling that it's half of a pair of cottages. Unlike before, it has a clear new front door and a hall facing directly out onto its frontage. The house will sit well on what is currently a very large plot, and we've worked closely with the council to ensure that it was a well-considered design. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrew. Could you just switch the mug for now, please? Thank you very much. Members, it's your turn. Council Ward.
Thank you, Chairman. I am the local councillor, and I call this in due to the concerns of a number of the local inhabitants. I have very much sympathy with the speaker's concerns about being overlooked, and I have a couple of things which I found a little strange in the presentation, which perhaps people could comment on. There was a comment made that the room was dual aspect, and therefore the windows on that side, I think, didn't matter, I didn't quite understand that. Perhaps someone could later on explain that to me. Yes, I quite understand that it is low in some ways with respect to the other houses. Of course, as the ground slopes down, that reduces the real positive amenity area of the new house. I've been and looked over the fence from both directions, and of course, as the ground slopes down, it will have a negative effect on jipers, which is on Sunny Dell Lane, which you will be overlooking. I think the old maxim of a picture speaks a thousand words is quite true in this one. Looking at what's up on there, comparing it to the spatial gardens to the upper left there, Shortheath is a place of long gardens, Shortheath Road, it's something we want to encourage and continue, and I find this rather squashed in, cramped and overdeveloped in this site. The fact that you have a track there with a couple of houses down it, doesn't really give you carte blanche to stick any more in, we've seen pictures of the site. The aerial photograph, I thought at the beginning, was really worth a thousand words. To me, were it a little brighter and you could see it a little better, as I can on my laptop, I think that says a lot about why we should not approve this. I think that's really about all I want to say, I believe it is bad for neighbours' amenity to the south, I believe it's bad for neighbours' amenity to the north, and I also believe the play area garden or amenity of the current house is not particularly good due to the sloping, and if it isn't a bad set, it's something remarkably similar to it that I saw over the fence, and something certainly you wouldn't want your children playing in. And yes, for all those reasons, personally, I am at the moment not inclined to support it.
Thank you, Council. Council Frost.
Thank you very much indeed, Chairman. I don't like it at all. I'm looking at the diagram we've got on page 11 of our agenda paper, and frankly, it looks a mishmash. The semi-detached cottage, which has got the two-story extension on it, looks very cramped indeed, and very close to the boundary, and quite what they've decided to do as far as parking's concerned, it looks to me as if they just found a space and stuck a picture of a car in it, because you've got three close to the proposed new dwelling, and you've got two somewhere away, and I can see in fact cars being parked on Shortheath Road itself. I don't think this is a very well-designed layout at all, I think it's cramped, it's overdevelopment as far as I'm concerned, I don't think that the semi-detached dwelling can really take a two-story extension, and on the other side of the coin, I don't think that the new house is in the right position and needs to, so I do have sympathy with the neighbours living round there, and quite frankly, on the basis of overdevelopment and all the words that go with that, I certainly will not be voting in favour of it.
Thank you, Council. Council Pritchard.
Thank you, Chairman. I was interested to hear that apparently this development will increase a sense of community, I can't see how that can increase the sense of community at all in this, in this development, I think, as the councillors have rightly said, it is too packed, it's almost garden-grabbing really, I think it's too packed, and I do think that it will have quite a negative impact on the local community really, and the other, the houses, I just don't, I don't see how that can be purposeful for the area. And I too don't understand how rooms can be not habitable, because I think every room in a house is habitable, I can't get my words out today, so it will have an overbearing impact, and again, I can't support this application.
Thank you. Can I just ask the officers to comment on Council Ward's comment about dual aspect windows?
Thank you, councillor. So just to clarify, when I meant dual aspect windows, the windows sort of facing from the extension to the new dwelling and vice versa, those, a dual aspect room is a room with two windows, so if there's any windows in the inside, while there may be some sort of overshadowing from each other, they do have a window to the front and rear also to provide more light, or if it's a non-habitable room, for like an en suite or a bathroom, we didn't consider it harmful that there maybe was only sort of 2.9 metres between a bathroom window and a wall, because we didn't think, we thought if it was a non-habitable room, like a bathroom, that a sense of light outlook wasn't entirely necessary.
So you're referring to the amenities of the future occupants?
Yeah, the amenities of the future occupants.
Council Ward, do you want to come back?
Yeah, I remain, sorry, yes, I remain a little confused, are we saying because there are two windows and there's light coming in on one side, no one's going to look out the other one?
Thank you, Chairman. I mean, obviously, yeah, any window that is clear glazed, you'd be able to, be able to look out of, I think we were referring to the amenity of future occupants in terms of there being enough light for that room when we were talking about dual, dual aspects and things like that. The, in terms of, there are some windows on the, on the, the front elevation that serve a, I think it's a bathroom and a stair, stairwell area, and if, if members felt that they overcame their concerns, they could look at conditioning those windows to be obscure-glazed, because they're, they're serving for the secondary areas. Thank you, Chair.
Council Nusia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Why do they need dual windows over there? Why can't they have the sunlight, the ones which come from the roof, and have the light in those rooms? I mean, windows are going to be there, suppose they are broken by somebody playing cricket next door, so it will be open watching other people as well, so there's sunlight things as well which come from the top, and remove those windows as well.
Chris?
Thank you, Chairman. I mean, there are alternative ways they could have made an application, but we're actually, we've got to determine what's, what's in front of us at the moment. Thank you, Chairman.
And the cottage is, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, the cottage, I think it's, as I agree with the rest of the councillors, it's just pushed into it, I wouldn't recommend that cottage as well, I'm sorry, thank you.
Council Hymn.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I do agree with the concerns about it being cramped, overdevelopment, overintensification of the site, but on the other side, the Cormeall live-in houses that have been built somewhere where someone probably didn't want them built in the first place, and I would far rather we have acceptable or appropriate infill development to developments on greenfield sites. That said, I don't think that the need for, for the homes does quite justify this because of the difficulties of the small site, and it's something that, I mean, we've got, applies, I think, across a number of the, the applications we've got in front of us tonight, I, it did seem to me before Christmas when they came along that they were being batched for us, and of similar considerations in them. I will mention now, because it applies to all of them, that obviously we don't have the Thames Basin heats and Weldon heat issues sorted, the Swetman people over wind judgment hasn't been addressed properly, we do have to obey the law, and one simple way of telling that our appropriate assessment... We do have to obey the law, and one simple way of telling that our appropriate assessment is not an appropriate assessment is from the Greek case commission versus Greece, C43 10. It cannot be held an assessment as appropriate where information and reliable updated data concerning the birds in the spa are lacking. We haven't yet had any bird numbers for the SBA. It's meant to be a risk assessment. The assessment isn't. In the absence of that, the law requires that we refuse consent. There are no imperative reasons for overriding public interest been put forward which would justify this development. So I will not be able to vote in favour of it anyway, just on the grounds that we have a duty here, and our first duty is to abide by the law whether people like it or not. So I do think this is overintensification. I hope we can, perhaps before we go to the votes, look at the conditions, because I think we would want to, if other members are minded to vote in favour of it, to pass, grant consent to this, then I think we would want to tighten up the conditions in respect of use of loft and obscure glazing. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll come back to your statement after Council Coburn.
Thank you, Chairman. I think I had the same reaction as most people. When I... Going back to page 11, I think Council Frost chose these pages. The first picture reminded me of a sheepdog, and I know that sounds a bit silly, that had sort of, you know, gone around barking, and they'd sort of put all the houses down quickly, you know, and run away. It just looked somehow odd looking at it, and it just reminded me. And then the next one, it sort of turned upside down. You feel it's all fallen into the point, you know. I just don't like the layout of this at all. I just don't think it's the best use of this piece of land, for all the reasons that other colleagues have said. But the parking as well looks to me so contrived. You know, it looked, oh, good Lord, we've forgotten the parking. How many do we need? All five, you know. Where are we going to put them? I just feel this is poor. You know, it's difficult to put my finger exactly what's wrong with it. I just don't like it. I don't think that all the aspects of neighbours' amenity have been taken into consideration. It's a difficult piece of land, as is, well, lots of land in Farnham, but certainly land that slopes down from Shortyth Road. And the implications of any new development must always be seen from the whole period, the whole area around it, the whole 365 degrees, because, you know, it is a very tricky 360, isn't it, degrees? So, you know, I think it is something that we should be very unwilling to support unless we have a really good case. And I actually don't see a very good case in this particular application. Thank you, Chairman.
Fine, thank you. Council Hymn, you talked about changing conditions or adding to conditions. Would you like to give us your thoughts?
Well, really, only as to ensure that we've got obscure-glazed windows to all the aspects which are overlooking, as the public speaker said. And I do have a concern with, you know, putting in obscure glazing conditions, because some years on, things can change, and, you know, very difficult for us to enforce, I would have thought, on that. But nevertheless, so, you know, I'd rather it was designed so that there wasn't any overlooking in the first place, but more people, more houses, we can't put them all 100 yards apart, can we? Just to tighten up obscure glazing, really, I think, and loft development. There is one particular question, the use of a room, we've been told that it will not be habitable. This is an issue also for the way that the SBA contribution has been evaluated, isn't it? Because all rooms that are capable of being, becoming bedrooms or being habitable, rooms are considered in working out the amount of money to be paid. I just wondered whether that had been considered, and whether, you know, whether it was consistent in the way the council was looking at it. Thanks.
You did mention loft conversions as well, did you, restriction on that?
Well, only if it's a problem with overlooking. And I think that the issue there is more a matter of obscure glazing if there was any future conversion. But I don't know what other members feel about this in this location. I personally won't be voting in favour of it anyway. I just want to make sure it's tight if too many other people do.
Council Frost.
Thank you very much. I think Council Coburn and I had the same thought at the same time. I think we need a condition that prevents any further development, and that includes loft conversion on this site. Because should we be minded to grant, and we haven't come to that, arrived at that stage yet, then I think we do need to make sure that, in fact, we don't suddenly find that there are two more rooms in the loft and an en-suite bathroom. And goodness knows where we put the extra cars. I think we've run out of space. But I would be against anything to do in the loft, and against any further development on that site. I mean, it's crushed enough as it is. Thank you, Chairman.
Council Nuzia.
Question to the officers. If the cottage is not built up because it's cramping up the area, the extension which is on the main building, could it be done? Permission on that, and the cottage could be totally removed? No? All right.
Chris, yeah.
Thank you, Chairman. There is just one point of clarification that I think might help, is that obviously when we're applying, if any conditions are applied in terms of obscure glazing, it should only be to the rooms it's reasonable to obscure glaze. So looking at the floor plans, there are... The reference to that which I was making is to the secondary kind of windows, which are the windows at the front, here, here, and here, because they serve on suites and kind of landing areas. There are large feature windows in the side that it may not be considered reasonable to obscure glaze such a large window in a room. So just as a point of kind of clarification, that you want to make sure that if you are looking to condition, that it's only on the windows it's reasonable to condition. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Council Coburn.
Yes, I just wanted to come back on obscure glazing. I've said this before, and I shall say it again. I dislike obscure glazing, other than in bathrooms. I really think if you need to put obscure glazing in any other kind of room, you've got poor design. I'm sorry, I don't think it's a solution, and I never have. I think it's an admission that you haven't thought the whole thing through. Oh dear, what are we going to do? Put obscure glazing in? I would hate to have obscure glazing in any rooms other than a bathroom. I would absolutely hate it, because there's something about a window that you're meant to be able to look out of and take in the view from it. And I'm sorry, I really do think that obscure glazing in anything other than bathrooms is really an admission of poor design, and it should be rethought.
Thank you, Council. Echo that sentiment entirely. But I do think we need a condition, from what I've heard from members already, that no further extension, loft conversion, or anything else should be permitted. Could we put that into a condition, please? Could you just read out what would be written down there, please?
It would simply be the removal of permitted development rights for classes. It would be... C would... Well, maybe members would have to decide which of the classes would be appropriate. B and C would be the roof areas. A would be extensions to the building.
Council Ward.
Thank you, Joan, for allowing me to come back. I totally support the comments about restricting future development, and I'm sure other people will be saying the same. All classes seems to me to be the best catch-all, rather than trying to be a bit silly and find that B27 wasn't covered and B32 was. So I would suggest all classes. And I just totally and totally and utterly concur with your vice-chairman's view, that as soon as obscure glazing comes up, you are basically saying, it's rather like parking a car on double-yellow lines and turning the flashes on. You're saying, I shouldn't really be here, but let's sort of do something and try and get round it. As soon as I see obscure glazing, I think, uh-uh, something wrong here.
Thank you. Okay, turn to the officers. Beth.
Thank you, Chairman. Taking into consideration the comments about removing permitted development rights, I would caution you against removing all classes. That would be considered to be unreasonable, in my view, because you would be removing their rights to install flues, chimneys, porches. I would suggest if you think that harm could arise from the addition of an extension, you could include A. B and C deal with roof alterations, and D deals with porches. But again, porches, I mean, the permitted development right relates to something that is three square metres, so I'm not convinced that sufficient harm would arise from that to warrant removal of that particular right. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Council Ward.
As we know to our cost, it is quite easy to get conditions removed or modified. I would suggest we go with it, and if they want to build a porch, they come back to us.
Thank you. Lewis.
I think the risk is of us essentially imposing an invalid and unlawful condition by kind of throwing everything in. I would agree with what Beth has said. If we want to have a sound lawful condition, we should only include a removal of permitted development rights in response to the harm that you've identified.
Council Ward.
I'm sorry, Chairman, to keep coming back on this, but unlawful is quite an emotive word in this council. Can someone please tell me what is unlawful about not allowing someone to build a porch without coming back to us for permission?
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Permitted development rights are permission that has already been granted to individuals. It's not appropriate for us to withdraw those rights for no good reason. And to put it frankly, I don't think there is good reason to in this case.
Council Frost.
I'm sorry, Chairman, we seem to be going round in ever-decreasing circles here. And there are porches, and there are porches. So a porch which is three by three is one thing. A porch which stretches from one side of the house to the other is another. And I can understand what Council Ward is suggesting, that if they... I mean, you only have to look at this plan here to see how badly the houses are positioned. Oh, they've moved it now, so I can't draw your attention to it. No, the other one, that's it. Look, you take the lower left-hand one, and it's almost as if the two houses are hitting each other. And I'm sure... Is there a porch there already? Look, we're going round in ever-decreasing circles. If we get to the recommendation, it may or may not be appropriate.
I would suggest we simply put the condition in to restrict any further development vertically in the loft space at this time, as Beth Hymn Smith has indicated. Are members satisfied with that? Are they... Are they content before we move to the recommendation? Yeah, Council Nuzia, finally.
Thank you for making me come back. I mean, could we have a deferral regarding the cottage part?
No.
No?
No.
And if they could come back for a new application? And what about the windows?
No, we're here to judge the planning application that's set out in front of us, and I think that's where we should be going.
Then I wouldn't agree for anything, as my fellow consuls are.
Fine. So in that case, members, I will move to the recommendation that permission... Recommendation is that subject conditions 1 to 15, informatives 1 to 6, permission be granted. All those in favour, please show. With the additional condition on the extension. Those in favour, please show. Those against, please show. That is unanimous. Therefore, can I have an alternative recommendation, please? Council Coburn.
Thank you, Chairman, that permission be refused.
The second, please. Council Ward. And now, please, reasoning for that refusal. Council Ward.
Overdevelopment of site, effect on neighbours' amenity, overlooking, and lack of decent amenity for play in the deep-sloping garden. And I'm sure someone would probably want some words about the nasty little track and the car access.
So we have basically overdevelopment, amenity space, overlooking. What else have you had, Chris?
Okay, I've made a note of the... Some wording as to what I think you're referring to. So I think there's two reasons that I've got down here. One, the proposed development would appear cramped and contrived, resulting in an overdevelopment of the site that would be out of character with the surrounding area. This would be contrary to policies FNP 1 and FNP 16 of the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan 2017, policy TD1 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan Part 1 2018, retained policies D1 and D4 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan 2002, and the Farnham Design Statement. And then I've got a second reason here. The proposed development would result in a harmful pattern of overlooking of the neighbouring, and I think you have to be specific about which dwelling that is, and a poor level of amenity for future occupants, contrary to the objectives of policies FNP 1 and FNP 16 of the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan 2017, policy TD1 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan, and policy D1 and D4 of the 2002 Local Plan. Thank you, Chairman.
Members, you heard those recommendations? Yeah. Council Hyman, you want to...
Yeah, can I just check tandem parking and parking provision? Is that covered under the residence amenity, or under D1 and D4? Or is there some other way of addressing that? I'll take it there'll be a standard SBA refusal condition.
Chris, again.
Thank you, Chairman. Those two reasons were referring purely to character and to residential amenity of the neighbours' properties. That's... Yeah, that's... The only point with regards to the second one is that I think we do need members to stipulate which of the properties it is in relation to in terms of the overlooking, just so that the reasoning is clear. But it is purely in relation to those two areas, not that I was referring to, rather than anything to do with SBA or parking. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Members, if we're happy, we'll move to the recommendation to refuse... Oh, sorry, Chris, you want to continue? Sorry.
79 Shortyth Road and Jipers on Sunnydale.
Can I come back a minute, Mr. Chairman?
Come on.
Yeah, can I just come back briefly, too? I mean, one of the things that sent the alarm bells ringing in my mind when I read the report was that twice in the report, you mentioned that we are closer to the boundary than our own SPD sets out. And that is to 77 and also to 79 and 81. So I think, you know, we're almost saying that by not following our own SPD, we're in danger of overlooking anyway. So I would argue that...
So I would argue that it's more than that, actually, in terms of neighbours' amenity, or potential harm to neighbours' amenity.
The proposed direction of detached dwelling with associated access, parking landscaping following demolition of the existing garage. And we'll just hold on while the officers change seats, and members leave. And the officer introducing this, Kayleigh Taylor, all yours.
Thank you, Chairman. This application has been brought before the committee at the request of a local member. The site outlined in red is located to the south-east of Abbott's Ride and is accessed by a private cul-de-sac. The site comprises a detached bungalow and its associated garden. The surrounding area comprises single-storey and two-storey detached dwellings. There is ancient woodland to the south-west of the site, shown here. This slide shows the photographs of the existing dwelling. And this slide shows the photographs of the existing garden area. The ancient woodland can be shown in photograph B, just here. And there exists existing hard standing here and towards the rear here. This slide shows the surrounding area. As you can see, there's an eclectic mix of detached dwellings in the immediate area. The proposal seeks the demolition of the existing garage, just here, the erection of a two-storey dwelling, shown here, the creation of an access, shown here, and associated This slide shows the proposed elevations of the proposed dwelling, which would have an arts and crafts design. This slide shows the proposed floor plans. The dwelling would have an integral double garage and five bedrooms. Please can I draw members' attention to the update sheet? This outlines that representation has been received with regards to there not being a connection to the main sewers. It's considered that condition four, on page fifty-six of the agenda report, would be sufficient to secure details of all services to be installed. The Forestry Commission has referred the council to their standing advice, and additional conditions have been recommended. Condition nine requires a sensitive lighting management plan, and condition ten requires electrical vehicle charging points. The matters of principle and technical opinion are: housing land supply; the council can demonstrate a five-year housing land supply; the impact on highway safety and parking provision; the county highway authority has raised no objection, subject to conditions, requiring the provision of parking and turning areas; there would be sufficient parking provision to meet the council's parking guidelines; refuse and recycling; there would be sufficient space for storage of bins within the curtilage of the site; the impact on trees and ancient woodland; the proposed dwelling would be six to twelve metres from the boundary with the ancient woodland. Whilst this would not strictly be in accordance with the Forestry Commission's standing advice, this land has historically been used as amenity space, and the rooting areas of the oaks within the ancient woodland already have concrete hard standing over them. It is therefore considered that the risk of harm to the ancient woodland would not be materially above that of the existing situation. Conditions are recommended requiring the submission of an arboricultural method statement, a tree protection plan, and details of services prior to the commencement of the development to ensure adequate protection of all trees worthy of retention from the development from harm, and provide their amenity contribution thereafter. The effect on the SBAs. Recommendation A is subject to a legal agreement to secure funds to mitigate the harm to the SBA. Biodiversity. A condition is recommended to restrict external lighting on the development. The matters of judgment which members are asked to consider tonight are: the location of the development. Officers consider that the location of the development is sustainable with access to the amenities of Farnham. Standard of accommodation and amenity space. This would meet the government's technical standards, and both dwellings would have adequate amenity space. The impact on visual amenity. The proposed dwelling would have an acceptable design and would be in keeping with the local Surrey vernacular. The impact on residential amenity. There is sufficient space between the proposed development and the neighbouring properties to prevent material harm by way of loss of light or overbearing impact. Given the distances between the proposed windows of the neighbouring properties and the oblique angles, there would not be material harm by way of loss of privacy to neighbouring occupiers. The recommendation is that permission be granted as set out on the update sheet. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Kelly. We move into speaking again, and I ask Kelly O'Pard step forward. The big button in the middle.
My first point is the proposal contravenes local strategic and national planning policies. The national planning policy framework is clear that development of residential gardens should be resisted. Also, the Farnham Design Statement states that in South Farnham, subdivision of large plots, which is known as garden grabbing, should be avoided if it is considered to result in a detrimental impact on the existing character of the area. And I point out that the proposed development would impact on the existing character. It also says underdeveloped areas which preserve the spacious aspect of the area should be retained. New development should respect the spacious character of the area, and the current low level density character should be preserved. Approval of this application would signal that many other large plots in the area could also be divided and developed, and that the current low density of building characteristic of the area would be at risk. My second point. Farnham's housing needs of the present and up to 2032 are met by the neighbourhood plan, which is based on the Farnham Housing Land Availability Assessment 2018. The plan and assessment predate the planning application, so a new dwelling at 50 Abbott's Ride is surplus to requirements and would not improve, as they say, the supply of housing in the district by making a modest contribution to the housing supply, nor would it provide, as they say, social benefit that carries considerable weight in favour of the scheme. Third point. There would be loss of light overshadowing and overlooking the existing dwelling on the site. This is a material planning consideration. However, an objection will not be made here, as the owners of the existing bungalow are also the applicants. The fourth point. The applicant's design and access statement and planning statement has some disingenuous statements, amongst others. It states the principle of such development is considered acceptable in this settlement area, subject to normal design and policy criteria, but the development actually contravenes local strategic and national planning policies. These are the latest normal design and policy criteria. My fifth point. The site of the proposed development is adjacent to the ancient woodland of Brockas Dean. The standing advice of Natural England and the Forestry Commission is that there should be a buffer zone of at least fifteen metres between any development and the ancient woodland. Thames Water have confirmed that there is no sewer on their plans that goes near the proposed site. Therefore, outflow from the required septic tank to the drainage field would pollute the woodland's soil, and building construction would damage the woodland's root system. Notes from the agenda for today state the rooting areas of the oaks within the ancient woodland already have concrete hard standing over them. It is considered that the risk of harm to the ancient woodland would not be materially above that of the existing situation. But this is a very different situation from the damage that will arise from the development, and the appropriate mitigation in this instance, a financial contribution towards a sang at Farnham Park, seems like the thin end of the wedge in allowing development that does not protect the habitat of the area. A previous application for this site has also been refused. In summary, it seems that the points in the notes for the agenda for the meeting consistently ignore the fact that the neighbourhood plan, the Farnham Design Statement, and the NPPF all state that plot splitting in this area should be avoided. As these policies have been democratically agreed in consultation with Farnham residents, I don't see why they should be now ignored.
Thank you very much on the timing, too. Call on Janet Long.
I'm here to speak in support of the application for the new house to the land to the rear of 50 Abbott's Ride. As members will note from the officer's report, it is recommended that permission is granted for this development, as there are no technical reasons to warrant refusal. The proposed new dwelling represents a suitable form of infill within the built-up area of Farnham. The existing access will be used to provide vehicle access to the new house whilst there is sufficient room for car parking to meet council parking standards. In addition, the proposed plot size ensures there is sufficient-sized garden to meet the recreational needs of the future occupants, as well as the recreational needs of the occupants of the bungalow to be retained. The rear garden would have a maximum length of eighteen metres, which is well in excess of gardens being provided in many other new residential developments. It is noted that neighbours have raised concerns regarding the drainage for the dwelling. We are advised that the existing house runs off mains drainage, and that this technically could be used to serve the new house. If, however, it proves that a legal impediment to utilise the existing drainage exists, then the new house could be served by a treatment plant or septic tank. This is, however, a matter for building control and is not a matter to be determined at planning application stage. We understand that concerns have been raised regarding the possible impact of a sewage treatment tranter on the adjacent trees. However, the permission will be subject to a series of conditions, including the requirement to provide an arboricultural impact assessment, tree protection plan, and details of services, all as required by the council tree officer. These would need to be agreed with the tree officer prior to development starting. This condition should be sufficient to ensure no impact on neighbouring trees. It's also noted that concern has been raised regarding the impact of the new dwelling on the ancient woodland. However, as set out in the officer report, and as previously mentioned by the previous speaker, the area on which the house stands is already covered by hard standing and is used as amenity space. It's considered that the oaks which lie within the ancient woodland already have a concrete hard standing over their root area, and accordingly, your officers have concluded that there will be no greater impact on the woodland when assessed against the current situation. Having regard to the above considerations, your officers have concluded that the development should be granted permission. We hope you'll follow this advice and support the application this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Janet. Now a call on councillor Andy MacLeod.
Thank you, Chairman. Asked to speak in this application is the local member who called the application into the committee. I'll start by explaining why. There have been very many strong objections to this application, from Farnham Town Council, from South Farnham Residents Association, from the Farnham Society, and from eleven individual objectors who live close to the application site. But as we all know, the number of objections is not the important thing. The important thing is the quality of arguments used. And I have to say, in this case, I thought the quality of the arguments and the objectors was particularly strong. Many of them quoted the NPPF, the Farnham Design Statement and policies from the local plan, and the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan, and even a previous decision, albeit back in 1973, which refused a fairly similar application. I'll just pick out a few points, actually, some of which have already been made by the statements and objection. Firstly, in terms of the previous application that was refused, it was seen then as an unacceptable form of backland development, which is really another way of stating what is said in the current NPPF, that residential garden... Development residential garden should be resisted, sometimes known as garden grabbing. As the objector said, the Farnham Design Statement states that subdivision of large plots in this area should be avoided if it is considered to be detrimental to the character of the area. The statement from the Farnham Society points out that this application appears to have been conflicted with policy FNP 1 of the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan, which actually requires that the applications should follow the guidance in the Farnham Design Statement, and should also protect and enhance inherited assets. In this case, I think we're talking about the ancient woodland. Taking that point a little bit further, the Forestry Commission and the standing advice from Natural England and the Forestry Commission does state that there should be a buffer zone of at least fifteen metres between any development and the ancient woodland. And as the officer's report states, in this case, the nearest point to the ancient woodland is six metres away. And in fact, approximately fifty per cent of the bulk of the application is within the fifteen metres buffer zone. So the thing I'd like to make about this, actually, is that what the officers seem to have to do, and I understand the environment they're working in, is where there's rules like this that appear to restrict the development, we have to look for reasons to overriding reasons to allow it, in fact. But I'd just like to point out that it never seems to work the other way around. If there is actually situations where developers have permitted development rights, we're never allowed to look for reasons to override things like permitted development rights. So it seems to be a rather unfair situation in that sense. And I'm getting fairly close to the end of it. So I'd just like to say that, as I said at the beginning, some of the applications, some of the objections seem to me to be particularly well-written, and I hope some of the members of the committee have had the opportunity to read them. Particularly an objection from Dr Roger Whittington, who put forward as good an objection as I've ever seen from a member of the public. And I'll just actually finish by saying what he said. In summary, the proposed development contravenes a number of requirements set out in local strategic and national planning policies. It puts ancient woodland at risk of permanent damage, and is surplus to Farnham's housing needs. It's not a sustainable development as defined in the NPPF. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor. Members? Councillor Pritchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I was... I shadowed the thought that we've asked a professional body, the Forestry Commission, and now we've disregarded what they've said, and I don't like that at all. I don't see how we can be qualified to disregard what the professional body says in regards to the ancient woodland. I also think that just because hard standing's there already, it's okay if we can do a bit more. I don't... I think that's unnecessary, too. And I think that the council has explained it very well, that there is not a sustainable development, and it is a good example of garden grabbing. We also see here that it... We also see here that it's completely against the Farnham Design Statement and the neighbourhood plan policy, you know, and I think the first public speaker summed it up very, very well. We've had a long consultation about this, and it's just totally disregarding the plan and the policies that are in place with regards to the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan and the Waverley Borough Local Plan. So I don't like it, I'm afraid, and I think it's quite evident here that it's not a good development at all. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
You probably know what I'm going to say, Chairman, but I heard someone say something about electric vehicle charging points, and unless I am in more need of an eye test than my opposition thinks, I can't find it in there. Could we please conscript Condition Seven from A3 on page seventy-nine and pop it in, please? Sorry, not happy with the update. Can we phrase it as Condition Seven, A3, page seventy-nine, which clearly lays out what we want in the way of power of charging points? This one is far too wishy-washy, and I'm not at all satisfied with it. Thank you.
Councillor Beaman, sorry.
I should be very brief, Chair. I think I'd just like to support whatever councillor Pritchard said. I think he summed it up quite remarkably. Just because of a bit of concrete standing there, it's all right to put something else down. It seems outrageous to me.
Councillor Frost.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm finding this one really very difficult. And one of the things that, you know, should we agree it, if I go to Condition Six, I'm very unhappy about the location of the parking area for HGVs, because Royal Road and Talbot Road is very close to the school and around those times, is it not? Oh, we're, sorry, I'm on another application. I'm keen to get the meeting over, but it's, so I'm terribly sorry. I do apologise. But I'm still finding it really very difficult, this one.
Councillor Coburn.
I was quite surprised that you said it was difficult, then I realised you were looking at the different one, because I cannot support this, and I couldn't support it, a bit like the last one from the moment I saw it. We have here a very limited block plan, you know, so what's an acceptable amount of amenity space? How long is a piece of string? We're talking here about character of an area, an area which is very low density. It's its charm. And what we're trying to do in our design statement and in our neighbourhood plan is retain the character of the individual areas of the town regardless of the amount of development that's going on. And we've done that by trying to put in policies that do protect larger gardens where they form part of the character of the area. In this case, I would dislike it anyway, but taking councillor Pritchard's point, you know, we are looking at ancient woodland here, and I can remember those of us on joint planning not long ago having a go at Beaulieu Homes. We were appalled for forty-five minutes jointly and separately, I seem to recall. And, you know, here we are again. We've got a piece of ancient woodland. We either protect our ancient woodland, or we just say, okay, come in, build where you like. And I just so strongly agree with councillor Beaman, the fact that we've got a bit of hard standing, you know, therefore let's go even further, just strikes me as madness. If we are going to say that development is unacceptable in certain areas because, then we stick to the rules. This is far too close to ancient woodland. We've got the figures in front of us. We don't have to work it out for ourselves. It is in an area where the, you know, the area is spacious in terms of space around the properties. And I think we wrote, I can't remember the exact wording in the design statement, that space around the property is sometimes as important as the property itself in terms of character, because that defines an area. We have everything in Farnham, and we love every bit of it, but they're all different, and we want to keep that individuality of the areas. So I just think this is not, the only thing I like about it is the design of the house, much to my surprise and relief, because there's a few things in Abbots Ride that have rather made me shudder. But, you know, that apart, where it is and the position so close to the ancient woodland, what it will do to this particular plot and the character of the area, even though I know it lies back, but then you can always see it from the other side, because, you know, you can get on to the footpath at the far end. So I'm sorry, I can't support this. I just think it is the wrong development in the wrong place.
Councillor Hyman.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I won't waste time on repeating what's already been said, but I know the, recall that the person who spoke in favour of the application stated there was no technical reasons for refusal, and I think actually that there is one. I don't know whether it was a mistake of omission or whatever, but perhaps officers would just check to make sure that I'm correct on it. But if you look at the appropriate assessments, the so-called appropriate assessments for the other two applications that are subject to the habitats directive, seventy-seven Short East Road and the car park at Royal Road, both of those cover and consider in some way both the Thames Basin heaths and the Weldon heaths. Of course, this application should do so, but it doesn't actually consider in combination impact on the Weldon heaths at all. It may be an error of omission, but as a technical issue, obviously, it's plain that the, I can't imagine for a minute that if Royal Road and Short East Road are closer to Frenchham SSSI, then this isn't. So that is a technical reason, no in combination assessment of the impacts on the Weldon heaths. So we do, and it's obviously determinative, the directive, so in fact, we can't grant consent on those grounds. Thanks, bye.
Chris would like to comment on that one, please. Or Lewis. Okay, they will just check that. Further debate, members? Anyone else wish to make their comment? Councillor MacLeod, someone? Councillor MacLeod, do you have anything else that you would say at the end?
Thank you, Chairman. I don't think I need to add anything to what the committee members have said. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councillor Ward.
Just a point of clarification, Chairman. Has my suggestion been accepted about electric vehicle charging points, just in case we are minded to approve it?
Totally. Let's see what you mean. Basically, you're saying seven KVA? KVA? Yeah. Two of the update sheet. So, yeah. Kayleigh, what we'd like is Condition Ten to be written as Condition Seven on page seventy-nine of the next application, which is very clear and precise and exactly what we shall be saying on all our conditions on electric charging.
Just to say, Chairman, I noticed that from the, that Royal Road condition came specifically from the Surrey County Council Highway's response to that application. I don't see why it shouldn't be common, but it was specifically from Surrey County Council that wrote that, not us.
Yeah, we've had this several times before, as councillor Ward will confirm, and that's exactly the wording I thought we were having as standard throughout all applications coming before Waverley. Chris? Chris, we'd like to...
Thank you, Chairman. The, we're obviously still looking at the appropriate assessment point, and if that was a, if the application was, if the recommendation was to be successful, then it could, that point could be deferred to us. Thank you, Chairman. I was just suggesting if members are minded to refuse permission this evening and wanted to include the appropriate assessment as a reason to refuse, then I would recommend they defer to officers the ability to check the purported error or omission and decide whether it would be appropriate to include that as a reason to refuse or not. I don't think, given the possible complexity of it, I don't think it would be sensible to make a snap decision here in the room. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd just ask... Can I just ask the officers, Beth? We have had this question of electric charging on a number of occasions before. Surrey County Council last year gave us this condition, you got on page seventy-nine, exactly as per this. We heard it on a number of applications, and I'd like to see it as a standard Waverley condition, absolutely. Okay? Members, can we move now to the recommendation? The recommendation is that subject conditions one to eight and additional conditions nine to ten, and informatives one to seven, and the one oh six agreement to secure contribution for mitigation for the impact on the SBA, permission be granted. Yes, and amended, yeah. Amended Condition Ten in relation to electric charging vehicles as per our discussion already on Surrey County Council's quite clear instructions. Those in favour, please show. Those against, please show. An alternative recommendation, please. Councillor Coburn.
Thank you, Chairman, that permission be refused.
The second up, please. Councillor Frost and Reasoning, please.
I'll kick off. I think it's the application by means of its scale and attempted subdivision of a garden plot is contrary to guidance in the NPPF, paragraph seventy, is it? I also think it's contrary to the advice in the Farnham Design Statement, which I know is material consideration, twenty-ten, and also against the main policy FMP1 in the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan. I'll do for starters, I'm sure, oh, and the ancient woodland, you know, to have so much of the building within...
Six metres.
Six metres, six to twelve metres of the ancient woodland buffer zone, contrary to the standing advice from the forestry commission.
Please.
So from my understanding, there's two reasons that you've put forward. One of them, something along the lines of the proposed development by reason of the, of its scale and subdivision of the residential garden would represent an inappropriate form of development, harmful to the spacious character and surroundings of the area, contrary to the objectives of FMP1 of the neighbourhood plan, policy TD1 of the local plan Part One, and policies D1 and D4 of the two thousand and two local plan, and the Farnham Design Statement. And then the other reason for refusal is in relation to the ancient woodland, the proposed development, well, is not, has not been demonstrated that the proposed development wouldn't result in harm to the ancient woodland, contrary to, contrary to the, to guidance within the NPPF and the guidelines from the Forestry Commission, something along those lines.
Peril? Councillor Coburn?
Thank you, Chairman. I mean, surely the point is that about fifty per cent of what's proposed comes within fifteen metres of the ancient woodland, so we're not providing the buffer at all to the ancient woodland in this development, this application. So, you know, which is against the natural, you know, the longstanding advice of both Natural England and the Forestry Commission, and yet, you know, a good, I'm saying fifty per cent, but you can probably correct me slightly, of the application falls within that sort of fifty-metre buffer zone, which we're not supplying.
Members, anything else to add? Councillor Hyman?
Well, yes, I'm not entirely sure I understood the officer's comment in relation to the inadequate assessment of the impact on the Weldon and Thames Basin heaths. There is, it's certain there's no in combination assessment, it's a requirement of Article six-three, so this is inadequate assessment of impact on Weldon heath phase one, SBA, and contrary to Article six-three, Waddensy judgment, People Overwinst and Sweetman judgment C three-two-three oblique seventeen. And, you know, we do have to do that, it is the law. I can't see any reason why we shouldn't be subject to it.
Beth?
Thank you, Chairman. As Lewis advised previously, if you consider there to be an error, we will take that away and have a look at it, and if it is necessary, we can add that as a reason for refusal. Thank you, Chairman.
I'm sorry, Chairman, the law doesn't allow us to do that. We have to make the decision here. The information isn't there, and we cannot grant consent. It's a precautionary principle, and there is a, there is therefore a presumption against granting consent, so we can't do it because of that.
Let me say this right now. If you think the council is operating illegally in any matter, you should communicate your concerns and evidence to the modern affairs, and not make unfounded allegations in a public meeting. Councillor?
Just a statement of fact, Chairman, that it's not there, I'm not making unfounded allegations against anybody, it's not personal at all. It's just a statement that, you know, it's not there, the assessment is not there, the law does not allow us to grant consent, and I really think it's rather unseemly that people, anyone here should want to try and override what the law clearly says. I mean, it obviously applies to us.
Thank you, Chairman. I think under the circumstances, it would be perfectly lawful for us to go away, for officers to go away and look at this. You seem to be suggesting that there's potentially a, an error or omission in the appropriate assessment. It wouldn't be appropriate to look into that. be appropriate to look into that in, in the level of detail that you might think necessary now. That being said, we have Natural England's approval of the appropriate assessment, and as members well know, they are the relevant nature conservation body that we should be relying on, and we should be taking their, well, we should be placing great weight on their response to our consultations with them. They've not identified any errors. My instinct would be to say that, that we proceed on that basis and not include it as a reason, but if councillor Hyman is adamant that there is an error or omission, then I think it is an option for officers to go away and look at that and decide whether it would form the basis of a sound reason to refuse. But, as I say, my, my feeling is that we can proceed on the basis of Natural England's consultation response. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. So, I wish to proceed with the recommendation that we have for refusal in front of us. You've heard all the reasons, I would therefore put it to you that the planning permission is refused. Those in favour of refusal, please show.
That's unanimous.
Unanimous. Thank you very much indeed. Moving on to WA, twenty eighteen, one seven zero three. Car park, Ryle Lane, Farnham, proposes the application under Regulation Three of the Town and Country Planning General Regulation nineteen ninety-two, erection of a building to provide two flats as associated works. Planning officer presenting this is Chris Tanner. Oh, sorry, sorry.
Sorry, it's great.
Philippa, I do apologise most profusely.
There is an error on page sixty-two on site description. It is not Pilgrim Way Primary School, it has been renamed and has been for several years.
Thank you, Chairman. I apologise for my croaky voice. The application is for the erection of a building to provide two one-bedroom flats with associated works. The flats will be social rented affordable housing, and Waverley Borough Council is the applicant. This slide shows the location plan. The application site is to the east of Ryle Road and is accessed via an existing tarmac access track. The site is to the south-east of Highfield South Farnham School. Residential properties are to the south-west and east, and the site currently comprises an unallocated informal car park with eight spaces where previously there were garages. This slide just shows the aerial photograph, and we can see the playing fields of Highfield School are here, and the residential properties are here, and you can see the access track just here. And this slide shows the block plan for the proposed building located here. There's a separate garden area for the ground floor flat and the first floor flats, as I've shown on the slide. There would be separate bike storage sheds for each flat, and three parking spaces are to be included, including one disabled space, which are here. I've provided some photographs of the site. Photograph A is taken from the north-west and shows the existing parking spaces. Photograph B is taken from the north-east, looking towards the car park, across the car park to the site entrance. C is taken from outside of the site on Ryle Road, and it shows the rear entrance gate to Highfield School, which is here, and the access track to the site, which is here. D is taken from the south-west and shows the tree-lined boundary to the school, which is here, and E is taken from the south-east along the boundary and shows the school playing fields in the distance, kind of see them there. On this slide of showing the proposed elevations, the north-east elevation faces the rear gardens of numbers thirty-seven and thirty-nine Ryle Road. First floor windows serve a bathroom and kitchen and are obscurely glazed, or to be obscurely glazed. The south-east fa, this, this elevation faces the rear gardens of twenty-seven, twenty-nine, and thirty-one Ryle Road, and you will note that there are no first floor windows, only one high-level roof light. The north-western elevation faces the playing fields of the school, there are no first floor windows, only a doorway to the garden, which is here, and the south-western elevation faces the car park and driveway. On this slide, we have the proposed floor plans. The ground floor would comprise flat number one with entrance here, oh, sorry, and the first floor would be the second flat, which has an entrance here. So, the matters of principle and technical opinion are housing land supply, affordable housing, so the proposal would provide two one-bedroom affordable flats, this should be weighed into the planning balance. Impact on highway safety and parking provision: sufficient parking would be provided for each one-bedroom flat, an additional disabled bay is proposed, as are electric vehicle charging points. Officers note that concerns have been raised regarding the loss of parking. The site is currently used as an informal parking, which is not allocated or attached in any way to the surrounding properties. The county authority have raised no concerns regarding the proposal, subject to conditions which require the access and parking to be laid out in accordance with the approved plans, a construct, excuse me, a construction management plan to be agreed prior to the commencement of any development, and the aforementioned electric vehicle charging points. Partially contaminated land. The council's environmental health officer has assessed the application and has raised no objections, subject to a number of conditions. Refuge and recycling, a bin shed is proposed for the storage of waste. Impact on trees: a condition is recommended that would require the protection of the trees on the northern boundary with Highfield School. Effect on the SBAs: the recommendation is subject to the completion of a legal agreement to secure infrastructure contributions and contributions towards Farnham Park. An appropriate assessment has been carried out, and Natural England raised no objections, subject to the aforementioned legal agreement. In terms of biodiversity, Surrey Wildlife Trust have raised no concerns regarding the proposal, but have recommended a number of conditions. Members are asked to exercise their judgement in relation to the following matters: the standard of accommodation and amenity space, impact on visual amenity, and impact on residential amenity. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Once again, public speaking, I'll call on Alexon Lottrom. The big button, yes, you're doing it in tandem.
Good evening. I'm representing the residents of Ryle Road and the thirteen objectors. We strongly object to the proposed development, which has not been properly thought through, in our opinion. The reasons for our objections are as follows. First and foremost, safety. There needs to be adequate access there for the emergency services to assist the disabled individual who's set to reside there. Proper consideration has not been taken when it comes to peak times for the schools, when the school is starting at the end of the day, as there are going to be so many parked cars along there, and emergency services are not going to be able to get, make their way through there easily. Ultimately, it could be too late if the emergency services cannot get through there and get to the disabled person. Safety of the school children also has not been considered either. There are going to be more parked cars and construction traffic. Added to that, there is a blind corner, which hasn't been shown on the photos. It's a recipe for an incident that could take place at any time. There are no surveys that have taken place to show congestion at peak times. There is a survey that was taking place on the seventeenth of November twenty-sixteen, which is outdated, but it does not look at the peak times of all the traffic that is along that road. Construction traffic is likely to have to mount the curb on multiple occasions to even access the site. This is illegal, in contravention of Rule two four four of the Highway Code. Parking: parents and guardians use this space for car parking to pick up their children. It's a safe area to pick up their children. Removing access to the parking at the site will cause congestion to all other areas on Ryle Road. The school, in fact, has no other access to car parks. In the last three and a half years, there's been a sixty-three percent increase in the number of children there, going from one hundred and ninety-one to three hundred and eleven, with a capacity of two hundred and ten students there and the number of pupils. This is just going to add to all the congestion, all the parked cars, and cause massive disruption. Farnham Town Council have objected on the grounds of parking here also. The loss of existing spaces would exacerbate the Ryle Road parking problem significantly, with safety implications. Disabled tenants would need adequate parking for carers, and I believe this hasn't been taken into account, and the shared disabled parking space appears to have no room for turning either. Wildlife: there are owls, bats, badgers, swifts, everything living there. Swifts fly through there, you're going to get rid of their flight path if you put this building up, you're going to disrupt them. These are potentially vulnerable and endangered species. Privacy: there's potential, massive potential, to be overlooked and overshadowed. These concerns have been raised on multiple occasions previously and have been agreed to. The properties in the areas were constructed back in the nineteen fifty's, and the right of view has been there for the last sixty-five plus years. The trees, they act as a natural sound barrier, absorbing the noise from the bypass, the noise is going to increase dramatically. The site is just too small for what is being proposed, it really is. The site access, it, it's cramped, it's right on the border, it's going to be overlooking, it's going to be overshadowed. It's visually intrusive and not in keeping with the neighbourhood properties at all. It, it's more modern, it's nothing like the buildings that are there existing already in the first place. The close proximity of the flats to the existing boundaries of the neighbouring properties. Also, we mentioned about contamination, we haven't really touched on that in great detail there, I found lead, asbestos there, and this is, this is out of date as well, this report needs to be done again and looked into.
You have half a minute left.
Okay. We, of course, do, do understand that the social housing is required within the borough, we really do. However, this is not a fit or appropriate site to be developed on. I and our neighbourhood implore you that this development does not go ahead, as such a negative and detrimental impact on neighbourhood and community would be felt. Also, we need to consider local town centre, the development that's going on there, has any plans been made to put the housing in there? And that is it for today, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Of course, yes, sorry.
Members, Pritchard, councillor Pritchard.
Thank you, Chairman. As you know, I'm ward councillor for this, for this ward, and parking is, is difficult. It is difficult all across Farnham, it's certainly difficult in Godalming and all across the borough, in fact. I, I struggle with this, though, this application, lots of ways, because the need for social housing far outweighs the need for a car parking space. We're not talking a huge development here, we're talking two one-bedroom flats. I certainly have had no objection come through to me, but I almost, on a weekly basis, get people contacting me regarding the need for social housing. This, this is not huge, but, you know, I'm inclined to, to listen to the other, the other councillors, because I do appreciate that, you know, this is a packed area, there are lots of children around this area, and that, you know, there can be some, some concerns with regards to safety. Unfortunately, though, our reports here, we have no objections from Surrey County Council, who are the authority of highways, but I just would be inclined to listen to what my other councillors would like to say about this.
Thank you. councillor Beam.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Well, I think the, the objectors have summarized this quite well, and I, I believe it's right to say that they have been in contact with local councillors, and they're not having any response to that. But I think, well, never mind, never mind. The point is, I mean, in the previous two applications, we've had, we've had gardening grabbing, and now we're into car park grabbing, it appears, I mean, in an area which is, which is quite clearly quite a small area for even two flats. A technical question, number one to the officers, is that the, the technical space of each flat, we had a debate on this on a previous application, and they were rejected because the land, the, the, the lead level of space was too small. Do the, the technical question one is, do these qualify? And in general, I have, I have a real problem with this anyway, because I'm asking to make a judgement on land owned by Waverley Borough Council. And that, and it strikes me as being extremely odd to me that we should be sat here making this judgement on land owned by ourselves. I mean, it's ridiculous, really. I mean, I, no, it's not surprising that Waverley don't have any objection. Okay, you can talk about Chinese walls, but let, let's be, let's be real about this, we all know what happens about it. Yes, they want, yeah, social housing is right, yes, proper, yes, we need social housing, yes, but not on this site, because you're just asking for problems here, and it, it's just, it's just, but I have this real problem, and it's going to go up again in another, in Aaron's Hill in Godalming soon, as well. I think it is, in the past, there has been situations where, applications like this, where land owned by Waverley Borough Council has been judged by other borough, other councils, and that's how it should be. And I find it, I find, I find this extremely difficult, actually. And as, I mean, at the last council meeting, we already said about, about, we've put the capital expenditure for this development and Aaron's Hill. But, I mean, I mean, I said that was put in the cap before the auction, so it was. I can't support this in any way whatsoever.
councillor Coburn, can you switch your mic, please, do? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I'm with councillor Beaman on this. I know Ryle well, terribly well. Before Highfield South Farnham changed and became as successful as it was, I was involved with lots of meetings down, I was a governor at the Ridgeway School, and we had the joint nursery on the, what was, in the Pilgrim's Way site, and trying to find somewhere to put the car at any time of day, anywhere near Ryle Road, was just impossible. And that was at a time when people were out earning a living, so you can imagine what it's like at other times. And when this first came in for application, your instinct is to say, oh, how lovely, you know, two social housing units, I mean, you know, what is there to dislike? And then you look at the site and you realise that planning is not just about the building, but it's where the building sits, what it's adjacent to, what it links in with. All of this is so important for planning. And on a site like this, which, when we first saw it, I have to say, at town council level, we sort of, you know, looked again at it to see whether or not what was being proposed was remotely possible, it's just, I think, the wrong site for this. There, there's a use for this site, and it's being very well used at the moment, obviously, on an informal basis by the parents, but quite frankly, we need parking spaces in that area. Now, you can't equate the two things, you can't say that parking spaces are better or worse than social housing, it doesn't make any sense whatsoever. We have a desperate need for social housing, and we do have sites that can be developed that are better than this one. So, I just think that, I, I can't support it, I, I just feel it's the wrong site, the development on it, I think, is wrong, it is very, very cramped. I wouldn't like to do anything in Ryle Road in a hurry, to be perfectly honest, at any time of day. You know, I think it is, it, it works like a lot of Farnham, because people drive very carefully and consider what's potentially going to be happening round the corner, but it is not a comfortable road to drive along or to park on for many, many reasons. And I just think this is the wrong place to put these two flats. So, I'm sorry, I really can't support this application.
councillor Hyman.
Thank you. I'm so glad that councillor Coburn has put it so, so well and so succinctly. Yes, the, as, as far as the, the issue that councillor Beaman raised in the respect of should we be judging it ourselves, well, we do, and it's the way things are, and I don't think I've known it done differently in the past twenty years, but the Steeple's judgment says that in such situations where local planning authorities are judging an application of its own, then we must be, in the words, particularly scrupulous, which means we've got to be tougher on ourselves than we would be on anybody else. And quite frankly, this is cramming, and I don't think we would allow anyone else to do it. You know, we wouldn't consider it, it wouldn't have got here, it wouldn't have gone, gone anywhere. Obviously, we do need, I mean, it says in the officer report it is social rented, we are getting so few social rented, you know, low-rent properties being built these days, that, you know, it is difficult, it's very difficult to argue against that, but the, the parking problems that...
the, the parking problems that we have around here, I mean, apart from having an eight metre high brick wall built at the bottom of your garden by somebody, which I think is, you know, the southern aspect of, of the development, it's not suitable for the disabled use, the disabled users, that, that is the intention, I don't think, because they always have carers, or, I, I know my disabled neighbours always have lots of carers throughout the day, often two of them, there'd be no parking for them, if they have to have visitors, they have to use a bicycle or share a bicycle, because there's going to be one visitor, bicycle stand or something. How on earth would you get out of the end disabled bay? I mean, it's, it's just, you know, to get in and out, the whole thing, to me, it's just too small for what's proposed, and we need the parking desperately. In response to what councillor Pritchard mentioned about Surrey County Council not objecting, well, they did not consider the displacement of the dozen car park spaces, there's only eight or nine spaces you can fit in there, but people park down the side in, in school drop offs. There's a dozen cars, you know, twice a day, going to be displaced to somewhere else, and there isn't anywhere to displace them to. It's, it's as simple as that. That was not considered by Surrey County Council highways, probably not their remit or something. They, they did, they do recognise the parking problems, because we've got very strict conditions recommended here, saying that vehicles can't park, construction vehicles can't park on Rail Road or Talbot Road. I don't know why they don't mention Upper Way and every other road, and the other road in the area as well, in that condition, but, you know, they, they can't park on there, around there and wait. So, you know, we know it's accepted, there is a massive problem with parking there, and this does not provide sufficient parking for the residents that we would intend to live there, and it removes parking spaces, it's not there, there's, we've got to do something else for that area in terms of parking, something positive. This would be negative, and it's, it's very sad, because we need more social rented, but this isn't it. Thanks, Chairman.
I think I can just simply say it's a very stark design, if not ugly. Cramped, loss of amenity to the local area, apart from the total lack of car parking in that area, you know, it's so wrong, I do believe. Members, anyone else wish to make any further comment, or can I turn to the recommendation? Subject to conditions, one to fourteen, informative one to seven, and securing appropriate mitigation in relation to terms of space and he's SPA permission be granted. Those in favour, please show.
None.
Those against?
Yep, seven.
Abstentions?
One.
Right, and permission, we need an alternative, please. Members? councillor Coburn?
Permission be refused, Chairman.
councillor Hyman, second. Thank you. And reasons? Sorry, listed some of them, have I? Okay, I find the design inappropriate, it's stark, it's ugly, it's cramped, the amenity space for local inhabitants is much reduced, wrong place for this development. Anyone else to add? councillor Beaman? Officers, are you... Inadequate parking, yes, indeed. Chris.
Thank you, Chairman. So I've made a note of what I think the reason that you referred to is the, something along the lines of the proposed development would be cramped and contrived and of poor urban design, harmful to the character and appearance of the area, contrary to policies FNP one and FNP sixteen of the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan twenty seventeen and policy TD one of the Local Plan Part one and retained policies D one and D four of two thousand and two Local Plan.
Members?
Well, only to say, I don't know that we need to stress any further over this, Chairman. Are Waverley likely to appeal against us?
We will vote on the recommendation to refuse. Those in favour of the recommendation, please show.
Seven.
Against?
None.
Abstentions?
One.
Thank you. Permission is refused.
Mister Chair, sorry, I do apologise, can I just, there's a point of order, I don't like the thought that there's, my constituency, I think that I'm ignoring them, and I can just, I would like to categorically say, I have not had one phone call, email or letter, so I would appreciate, if you wanted to stay at the end of the meeting, I would like to talk to you. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Okay. Can we move on then, please, to the next? Yeah. Go home and find a nice hot toddy. Members, we're going to take B one and B two together, and Chris French is going to introduce the two applications. It's...
councillor follows.
councillor, councillor follows.
Could you do this outside?
Outside, please. Thanks. Thank you very much. B one, WA twenty eighteen, fourteen oh five, Willie Place Lodge, Chamber Lane, Farnham, and B two, WA twenty eighteen, one four zero six, same place, listed building consent. Chris, all yours.
Thank you, Chairman. This application is brought to committee as the agent is a Waverley Borough councillor. Application WA twenty eighteen, one four oh five, and WA twenty eighteen, one four oh six, seek planning permission and listed building consent, respectively, for a two story rear extension to a grade two listed building. There are no updates since the writing of the report, so I'll run through the details of the application. This shows the application site, outlined in, in red here. The site's within the countryside beyond the green belt, an area of great landscape value. You'll see to the south of the site, you've got the A thirty one, and then you've got Chamber Lane running to the, to the west of the building. And this is an aerial photograph of the site, you can see the building on the corner there, and an existing extension on the eastern elevation of that, of that building. And this is the proposed block plan. The location of the proposed extension is, is highlighted in red on that plan, and there's an existing extension which would be demolished, which is, you can see within that, within that area. These are the existing floor plans and elevations, and you can see the existing extension to be demolished on the, on the rear there, showing kitchen and bedroom four. And these are the proposed elevations, the two story rear extension would have a maximum ridge height of approximately seven point six five metres, slightly below the ridge height of the, of the, of the host dwelling. The proposal includes this cat slide roof area here, and you can see, you can see the extension on the, on the rear elevation to the right hand side, and also on the southeast elevation, there, within the cat slide roof, there's three roof lights. And these are the proposed floor plans, and we've got some photographs of the, of the site. And they're taken from, the, the one on the top left and the one on the bottom right are taken from the A thirty one, and the one on the top right is taken from the rear of the site, looking at the, looking at the existing extension there. The matters of principle and technical opinion are the, the impact on the principle of development and terms of the impact in the countryside, and the impact on the, on the SPA, impact on heritage is also one of the technical opinions. Matters of judgment, we have the, the impact of the proposal in terms of the, the visual amenity and the impact on the countryside beyond the green belt and AGLV. And then we also have the impact on, on residential amenity. For the reasons set out in the officer's report, both applications are recommended for approval and consent, and, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Chris. Members? councillor Hyman.
Thank you, Chairman, as board member for this, I'm very concerned that on the very last page, one hundred and five of this, paragraph four, which says the lead to be used, any flashings including code of lead, I just don't understand it. Apart from that, I live, there are no objections to this application, and I think we should be able to, provided we get any grammar right, if, if that is English, or, or change it accordingly, then I'd suggest we go to the two votes, would it be? I don't think there's any objection.
We will be going for two votes, yes.
Yes. Okay, no, no objection whatsoever, fully support. Thank you very much.
Against our, that also has come to the correct wording, but it's a delightful and sympathetic addition to the building. So, so paragraph, that's sub four, condition two...
Condition four on page one hundred and five.
No, it's not. Is it? Is it? Okay. No, it's not.
Oh, yeah, two, sorry, two.
Yeah. Lead to be used for, presumably for any flashing. What does it mean? Ru... Sorry.
And it means for lead to be used for any flashing.
We'll make sure it's the right lead.
We all know what flashing means, though.
Yes. Indeed. Right, members, let's move to the recommendation on B one. Recommendation, subject condition one to two and informative one, plan permission be granted. Those in favour, please show.
Yeah, it's unanimous.
Unanimous, thank you very much. And B two, WA twenty eighteen, one four zero six, the recommendation is subject condition one to and informative one, listed building consent be granted. Those in favour, please show.
Confirmation of two.
Thank you very much, indeed. That concludes our meeting. Thank you all very much, indeed.